The minutes of the executive session for me, second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of approving the executive session?
Aye.
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 And I will have to stay for that, too. Two extensions. Thank you. Now, that said, we'll move on to public speak time. If there's any member of the audience who'd like to step forward for any item that's not on our public hearing, please state your name and address or affiliation.
Hello. Patrick Bruff from the Greater East Hampton Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to take a second this evening to make sure that all the councilors had a chance to review the letter that I left in their mailbox earlier this week. And they may have seen in the Gazette today an article, or I should say editorial-type piece, that was written by me from the chamber in regards to a roundtable event that we held last week, or actually, May 3rd, sorry about that. The event went very well. I just wanted to let you all know that it was a very successful event. There was about fifteen members of different boards and committees from the city, including Councilor Cobb, I'm sorry, McCoy, was there as well. And I just wanted to publicly thank all the participants that came and participated in the roundtable, as well as Jessica Allen for helping us plan and put this, put the event together. So, thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to come forward and address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. We have none, but we do have some correspondence.
Yes, yes. And with this hopefully nice weather, and I think this will be the full first summer where that, the whole, the trail is complete with the Man-Hand Bridge. The Man-Hand Rail Trail is having their annual breakfast, Sunday, May 20th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. The American Legion, it's to celebrate Bike Commute Week and support the rail trail. It involve breakfast, eggs, mini pancakes, sausage, bacon, $5 suggested donation. So please ride your bike down to American Legion and support the Man-Hand Rail Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to note before we go on to mayor's communication that this, these government sessions are shown repeatedly on Channel 20, Wednesday through Friday at 6:00 p.m. For those who'd like to have the comfort of their home to view our sessions. Now that said, mayor communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing on the agenda, but I wanted to let you know that the Senate budget came from their Ways and Means Committee today, and it appears as though our budget proposal and the Senate and House budgets are all made up. There's about a $2,600 difference in the Senate budget, not enough to be concerned about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That said, we do have some time left over. We'll move on to reports from standing committees, rules and government relations. Counselor Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Government Relations Committee met last evening and approved in a vote of two to zero the revised Code of Ethics Rule 19.
I did hand out this revised rule last meeting, and I did so again this evening for your reference. Just to reflect on it, we did take into consideration Counselor Winnie's request that we review the privacy language. And the highlighted section, which starts with furthermore, this code of ethics shall apply whenever a city council member is in any public setting, or when any action or conduct becomes a subject of general public notice, is the language that revised that privacy language. We, personally, I felt that was a good move because the, it would be very difficult to try to enforce the other language. And when I looked at the House of, the State House of Representatives' own rule, I don't know how they enforce it. So what we intended with this language was to make sure the councilors recognized that when you're in a public setting, you're still a city councilor. So that's why that's in there. And then we clarified what the Rules and Government Relations Committee may do. Rather than simply draft a resolution of censure, we wanted to give the committee, a future committee, the authority or the, if so approved by the city council, to suggest a lesser action, such as an apology. So that was, that language change was put in. I'm here to answer any questions, and the committee's intent on this, I believe it's a good rule. I believe also that it serves two purposes. One is to inform the councilors, especially new councilors, that we need to be careful of our own ethics. And secondly, it is, hopefully offers a deterrent to future actions, whether in a committee, actions by a council, whether they're in a committee or in the public, they need to remember, they have an ethical obligation to be careful.
Before we put a motion on the floor, are there any questions for the councilor? Counselor Hagan.
So, you're removing the highlighted part? Is that?
No, the highlighted part is what we're adding.
Oh, you're adding now?
Yeah, we removed, if you remember, the older one.
So this is the new addition?
This is the one we would pass tonight, barring any amendments requested.
Any other councilors? Okay?
Well, then I.
Okay.
Could somebody define invidious for me? Where is that?
Invidious discrimination.
Invidious discrimination?
That, it's.
Counselor Cobb, you know, it's funny. That's the first time I've seen that term.
It's a term that actually encompasses a lot of, we'll say, negative behavior.
Well, it's just one of those things, before I'd vote on it, I would, you know, define.
I don't have a dictionary in front of me, so.
It's probably right out of the House rule. So I'm gonna defer to Counselor Cobb, who initiated the draft of this.
It's insidious.
Invidious.
I'll, I say obvious.
Obvious, visible.
You know. What I did was kind of choose a word that encompassed a lot of adjectives. It's really all I, it's really all I did. It's not a sinister word as it sounds. It's just a, rather than choose many adjectives, I just tried to encompass them in one word. But I do not have a dictionary.
Oh, I mean, I'm not asking for a dictionary definition. I'm just not familiar with the word myself, so it's just, it was one of those things that I was kind of curious.
I think the word obvious could be put in there, but, or we could remove the word entirely if it.
I'm not opposed to leaving it there. I'm just saying, as long as we're aware of what it means, and it's not.
It's not insidious. We don't want that. It's invidious.
All right. I will follow up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I move that the council, the city council approve Rule 19, Code of Ethics, to be added to the council's rules this evening.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to recommend that, that the new Rule 19, Code of Ethics, be added to the council rules.
I'd like to make a motion for amendment.
Okay, we have a motion for an amendment.
I'd just like to make a motion just to remove invidious. I mean, I think it, unless we really know exactly what it means, I think it looks slightly foolish to be accepting it without knowing it. So I would, and I think discrimination is fine, so I would make a motion just to remove invidious.
I'll second that motion.
Okay?
You want it?
She's got the definition.
Invidious, adjective of an action or situation likely to arouse or incur resentment or anger in others, of a comparison or distinction unfairly discriminating unjust. Invidious.
I like the definition, Frank, now that I hear it.
It sounds almost redundant, though.
I think it's overly loquacious.
Give me five.
I'm just gonna, I just, I.
All right, we don't need it. It is redundant.
I'm just gonna see with my motion.
Okay.
Do you want to vote it up or down?
Are there any further discussion on the amendment before we do anything?
No, not amendment.
Okay. That said, what I'll do is, I guess I'll move the amendment first. We have a motion on the floor, we have a first, who's second is?
I did.
Dan did.
Yeah, I did.
So we have a motion on the floor to remove the word invidious from, as an amendment. Any further comment on that? That said, all those in favor?
Aye.
All be against? That said, motion passes, the word is removed. Okay? Before I allow a motion on the main item.
Well, we have a motion already on the floor.
Right, we do have a motion already on the floor?
Counselor Winnie.
Is there any further discussion on the main motion?
Yes, I would, I would like to remove the highlighted section of furthermore, this code of ethics shall apply whenever a city council member is in any public setting or when an action or conduct becomes a subject of general public notice. And the reason why I'm asking that that be removed is, we are always out in public, whether it be at a family function or as being representatives of the city council, we are always out there. And I rely on the people that are around me and that are with me to make sure that I am on my best behavior. And should I not be on my best behavior, then I would, I would expect the people that are with me or around me or whatever to correct my actions duly. I don't think that it is within the city council's purview to, to have somebody going around, watching everything that we do in a public setting, and coming back and tattletaling on us. I just, I just have a really bad gut feeling about that. So I would like to see it just removed altogether. I have no other problem with the rest of the Code of Ethics. I think this is a long time in coming. I think that the Code of Ethics should have been put in when the form of government was established. I strongly feel that all of the things that are mentioned in the Code of Ethics are something that we absolutely should abide by when we are in council chambers. But I think that if we're outside of council chambers, that it should be a personal attribution to all of us to attain all of the aforementioned. That's why, that's, I would make the motion that we remove furthermore, this code of ethics shall apply whenever a city council member is in any public setting or when any action or conduct becomes a subject of general public notice.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, an amendment to the main motion, actually, to remove the first highlighted section as expressed earlier. Is there any further discussion on that?
I have to vehemently disagree. I feel that the reason that we're here is because of an action taken which was not in a council setting, but became general public notice, and has really hurt the council's reputation and that of a singular council, counselor. I feel that we are always councilors, and that relying on our own public discretion is fine, but it doesn't work all the time, as proven recently. And having this language does not interfere with your ability to act on anything in public. I just don't see the reason why we cannot, and I believe also that the, being a city council, reprives us to maintain a code of ethics beyond our work for the city, whether it's in this committee or in other committees. We have to maintain that code of ethics. And not having this language, I don't understand where it hurts us. I just don't. So I have to disagree.
Counselor Ziegler, because I'm looking at me.
I guess my question would be, the second highlighted piece, when it says that this code of conduct, or, excuse me, code of ethics shall apply beyond, you know, this actual chamber, we are talking again about this first paragraph, though, are we not, where we're saying that there will be professional conduct, civility among our members, and we're not going to tolerate harassment, discrimination, or offensive behavior based on race, color, religion, and national origin? So if I'm looking at it, that this is the code of ethics that we're charging ourselves with in public, I don't have a problem, problem with that necessarily. Because, again, I do believe that when we are in public, we should live by the above piece. The second part, then, nor shall any member of the city council use profanity, insulting, threatening, or abusive language in the course of public debate in the council chambers. We're not saying that if I was out in public on the rail trail, for instance, using profanity, that then that would be something under the purview of this, this code of ethics. I think that is specific to the chamber. So if we're just talking about the toleration of harassment or discrimination, discriminative statements or conduct, I do feel that the second piece, the highlighted piece, should stay and should be, you know, apply.
Okay, any further discussion or comment on the amendment? Counselor McCoy?
Yeah, Counselor, so the definition, the idea of public setting, would that be, as we said, you know, a public organization, not necessarily someone's backyard party or something, but we're talking about some kind of public meeting other than city councils? Is that how?
Yes, and to further, I like what Counselor Ziegler has said, especially with regard to harassment and discrimination, if you're in a public setting and you make very discriminatory comments in a public setting, and some of them are our own citizens in East Hampton, that becomes public notice, this council has a right to act on that. And I believe that's what we're going for. It's a deterrent, and it tells the public that we're not going to tolerate a city councilor doing that. We're not going to just adjudicate city councilors when they're in a committee that, or representing the city. They're always representing the city in a sense, because if they're in a public setting and there's some discussion about taxes or something in a, in a public session of any kind, I don't care where it is, they're talking about city business, so. In any case, I just don't think, I think what Counselor Ziegler said is, is appropriate. We have to be very careful outside. And again, you know, our rules are designed to give us guidance, and how we use them, we have a lot of discretion when they're brought to us. I want to caution all of us from thinking this is something that puts us in some kind of handcuff, because rules that we design can be amended easily, can be decided at the time whether we're going to use discretion in how we apply them. We do that all the time. So I don't feel like, again, that writing a rule down like this puts handcuffs on us. I mean, we are, as a board, allowed to look at our own rules at the time we use them. We can set our rules aside for anything, and I'm not saying that we would do that in this regard, but I'm, I'm just pointing it out that this isn't like the charter in which we are, you know, we are told we have to abide by that. These are our rules which we will use to guide us, okay? So if something, and I say that because if something's brought to our attention, we can choose at the time whether it's, this rule applies or not. You know, we have that kind of discretion as a body, to send it to committee or not. So I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, I don't feel like having this really will play into the kind of thing that a charter amendment would or something. I don't know if I made myself clear on how.
Any further comment? Counselor Hagan?
I certainly don't have any problem with the, the language in general. I did have a problem when Counselor Winnie originally brought in that it was about, I think it said, members' personal life. This one only bothers me a little in the sense of, I think it's a little bit ambiguous. And again, it's not your behavior, but I mean, as one who golfs or something, if you, and again, I know we try to be reasonable, but we're also, you know, as someone who golfs, if you throw a golf club, is that some type of behavior of, you know what I'm saying? You know, I've seen Tiger Woods in front of 30 million people kick a golf club 30 feet. Is that, is that behavior? I mean, I wouldn't think that's behavior that's going to come in front of the council. And again, I just, you're kind of, I just find it's ambiguous of what, when you start saying in general, as opposed to, I have absolutely no problem when you're acting in your capacity in front of boards, committees, stuff like that. But once you start infringing on people's personal lives, I think you're, you're going into another, another whole area that I'm a little less comfortable with, that's all. Not, not uncomfortable with what you're saying in the top paragraph, but uncomfortable in, in looking at someone's personal life. And again, I don't think anyone, you know, is going to do that on an incident like I'm saying, but it certainly, it certainly brings up where someone could make that a, for whatever reason, bring that up in a council, council setting.
Yeah, be brief, please, because we're getting past our public hearing. I'm sorry. Just to use your suggestion of an incident on the golf course, if someone brought that forward, I'd be the first to say, that doesn't apply. And again, that's going with our discretion. But if we remove this language, it would allow a council in the future to say, well, that happened in a public session. And it could be a very bad discriminatory thing that happened in a public setting that wasn't related to city activity. It wasn't at a council meeting, it wasn't at a border committee session, it was just a public setting in which the council went off. And without this language, someone may say, well, we can't do that, you know, it didn't happen in the council chamber, it didn't happen on a city agency, city chamber, or board. So someone could say, we don't, we don't have any right to say anything. And I believe we need to have the right to say something if, but we have discretion. The golf situation, I wouldn't bring that forward. But a situation in which discrimination happened, or statements happened, I believe we have to have the ability to say something about it. If we take the language out, it may give a future council reason to say, well, it doesn't apply. Because this first chapter, first paragraph only talks about council chambers, city agencies, and boards, and commissions. So now you're taking it out of the fact that something could happen at the library board or someplace else that you disagree with. So I don't know what to tell you, but a reason it's there is because you're always a city council in a public session, and we have discretion over what we can do. All right, anyway. That wasn't brief enough, I'm sorry.
Since you haven't spoken, please.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I agree with Counselor Hagan, and, but also with Counselor Ziegler, that I think that, you know, if the golf club situation would apply, then I wouldn't really be in favor of it. But because this is, we're talking about this code of ethics, which is spelled out pretty clearly up here, unless you were harassing the golf club, it wouldn't apply. So, you know, so I think I can actually be okay with this.
But it might be considered offensive behavior, kicking a club, or, you know, squaring, or whatever. I mean, it's certainly offensive behavior.
But it's, I mean, but the offensive behavior is based on race, color, religion, national origin, or, I mean, it's pretty specific.
That's different.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, I'm gonna actually move the motion myself here, and limit discussion because of our timing. So we do have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the Code of Ethics, excuse me, we have an amendment first. We have a motion on the table to recommend the removal of the first highlighted section. All those in favor?
Aye.
Objections?
Opposed.
Any abstentions?
I would say aye. I want a re-.
So Joy and Dan.
And Chad.
Chad, okay.
Three opposed and five in favor? Am I counting wrong?
Joy, Dan, Chad.
Yes.
Justin. Yeah, five.
Any abstentions? None?
It doesn't pass, it fails. Five opposed.
It fails, yes, sorry.
So we move the whole question.
As amended.
Amended with the invidious removal.
Yep. So I'd like to now move the full question as amended with the removal of the invidious term. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections, opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes, then.
I know we're in a hurry, I just want to conclude that we will be meeting on May 23rd, Rules Committee in Room 1, to deal with Counselor Sekowski's request, and to deal with the 32B request that will come to our committee later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that said, could I have a motion open to public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to open the public hearing? Counsel Hagan?
First public hearing tonight, I'll do a second reading dated April 9th, 2012. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation, the amount requested $500. This is to be transferred from Streetlight Holdover in the amount of $500, and transferred to Licensing Board Clerical in the amount of $500. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a shortfall in the Licensing Board budget. Just a quick comment before we bring the mayor up, I believe, he'll tell you this has been due, anyone who's been watching the papers, the Licensing Board has had a very busy session this year, and I think there's been a lot of extra time spent, and I think that's the reason that it overran their budget, but I'll let the mayor provide details first.
The staff person for the Licensing Board is my assistant, Karen, and so she's been working all these extra meetings and the like, and so this would offset that and provide payment for the hours that she's working.
Okay, thank you. Any comments before, the councilor before a motion? Any comments for the public before we put a motion? Seeing none? Counsel Hagan?
Put this in the form of a motion, I make a motion that we approve the following appropriation. Amount $500 to be transferred from Streetlight Holdovers to Licensing Board Clerical, also in the amount of $500 for the following purpose, to provide funds for the shortfall of the Licensing Board budget.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an inpart transfer of $500 to provide funds for a shortfall in Licensing Board budget. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. Counsel Hagan?
Second public hearing dated April 2nd, 2012, hereby made for the approval of following appropriation, the amount of $2,319.40 to be transferred from Landfill Professional Services Holdover in that amount, $2,319.40, to be transferred to Landfill Professional Services, $2,319.40. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a possible shortfall in the budget. The, again, the mayor can speak on this at a little greater length. I believe this was a matter that the state came in and said we had to do, and they found some creepage in the gas release, and they required additional monitoring that the city had to do at the landfill, but.
Counsel Hagan has it exactly right again. Happy to answer any of the questions. The state does, had asked us to expand the monitoring for methane at the site in a northly direction towards the neighbors in North Hampton, and so there are going to be additional monitoring costs. The DPW office manager would like to take this, funds that are existing in that account for the prior year, and make them available in this year. In the past, this would have been done under the charter as an intra-departmental transfer.
Any questions for the mayor? Counsel McCoy?
Do we have an appropriation previously for doing this similar thing?
There's a forty-something thousand dollar budget appropriation.
Previously?
Every year, there's.
Okay, I thought this, we had done.
Landfill monitoring will, we don't see, we don't see a date when it will stop. Landfill's been closed since the early 90s, and we've been spending money monitoring it every year, and I don't think we'll ever stop, the city will ever stop monitoring that site.
Any other council's questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone in the public who would like to come to the podium and address the council on this issue? Hearing none? Counsel Hagan?
I'll make a motion that the full city council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested, $2,319.40, to be transferred from Landfill Professional Service Holdover in that amount to Landfill Professional Services. Again, the amount of $2,319.40. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for a possible shortfall in the budget.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an inpart transfer of $2,319.40 to provide funds for a possible shortfall in the budget. Any further discussion on the motion? Counsel Hagan?
I did, was remiss in both of the last two, but both of these were approved 2-0 by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes. Counsel Hagan?
Third public hearing tonight is a request for the following appropriation dated April 26th, 2012. The amount requested is $2,850. This should be transferred from the Park Capital Appropriation in that amount, $2,850, and transferred to the Park Department, Filling, Repair, and Maintenance. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund remediation repairs to the Park Office Bathroom. Again, the mayor can speak a little more on this, but I believe there's a mold condition making the public, or the restrooms unusable for the employees, I believe.
Again, that's exactly correct. The former Park Office Building, the small wooden building that's located in Daly Field, had, had a leak in the roof that caused some buildup of water in the building. The rugs and the like are being removed, and we're trying to return that building to some usable shape. But the workshop is connected to that, and the employees use the restroom in this building. So this is the focus, the activity, on removing and replacing the drywall in the restroom so that the mold is no longer in the building. The roof repairs have been completed with our forces already, and so this just really would allow a safe restroom facility for the employees.
Okay, any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the council on this issue? Seeing none, Counsel Hagan?
Just before I make a motion, I. Just before I make a motion, I, this was also approved, this one was approved 3-0 by the Finance Committee. I'll put this in the form of a motion, that the full city council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested will be $2,850, and it will be transferred from Park Capital Appropriations, $2,850, to Park Department Building Repair and Maintenance, in the amount of $2,850. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund remediation and repair to the Park Office Bathroom.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an interdepartmental transfer of $2,850 to fund remediation repairs to the Park Office Bathroom. Are there any further comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Council Hagan?
Final public hearing tonight, a request for the following appropriation dated April 10th, 2012. The amount requested is $12,500. It would be transferred from short-term interest expense, in the amount of $10,000, in general reserve fund, in the amount of $2,500, and transferred to the Assessor Professional Service, in the amount of $12,500. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funding for an appraisal of real property, and expert testimony for an appellate tax board hearing. This is a dispute between the Treehouse Project and the city over appraised values, and I guess I'll leave it up to the assessors here and the mayor to explain in detail exactly their need for these funding.
Who would you like to go first?
Mark is here to answer any follow-up. At this point, what we are doing is using an outside assessor to determine whether the assessments that we're using are appropriate, and to use that information in our efforts to either negotiate a settlement to this issue, or to go to the appellate tax board just to defend the city's position. It's necessary to have a professional appraisal when you go to the appellate tax board. The property owner, in this instance, it's actually Beacon Properties, it's a treehouse development, but a developer in the eastern part of the state is the owner of the property. And so Beacon has appraisals for the parcel, they are willing to share the appraisals privately, or, not privately, but, well, yeah, privately, with the city. We're not required to release their appraisal, both their appraisal and our appraisal will become evidence in the ATP case if we get that far. Sometimes having good appraisals allows you to be able to negotiate a settlement without having to go to the expense of the attorney and the appraiser going to Boston and the like, and Jack Fitzgibbon is working with the Board of Assessors and Mark, and I think you actually probably met today, or will be meeting today, so Mark may have further information, but in a nutshell, that's the, that's the need.
Any questions for the mayor, or any technical answers that our assessor can provide?
I have one for Mark.
Mark, please.
Mark, when you originally did this, it was an in-house appraisal based on your, your own, your own employees appraising it.
Well, the original assessment was by vision appraisal back in fiscal year '07.
But what are they appealing? They're appealing a recent appraisal, aren't they? Are they appealing?
They're appealing fiscal years '09 through '12.
So that was your follow-up done by your own people?
Right.
The reason we're getting an outside firm is because you feel confident that they will support your appraisal, right?
Not support, at least, you know, pretty close.
Right, okay, because.
Our assessments, don't forget, are based on a mass appraisal, where, you know, an appraiser's gonna commit, he's gonna individually appraise that prop.
He's gonna do a more detailed job, isn't he? Okay, so this is money worth it?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I think it is, and I just wanted to hear that. Thank you.
Okay?
Mark?
Go ahead, Council Hagan.
Is the dispute over the vacant lots, or is it over the built lots, or the whole project, the whole development?
Yeah, the whole development.
The whole development. So it's not just some of the land that's gonna be developed, but it's the whole?
Right, well, there's 33 lots, nine of which are affordable, set aside for affordable, and there's two lots that contain 60 apartment units.
Okay. Is there any one from the public who would like to come forward and speak to the council on this issue? Please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing none? Council Hagan?
Before I make a motion, this was approved 2-0 by the Finance Committee. I'll put this in the form of a motion, I request the, recommend that the full city council approve the following appropriation. Amount requested, $12,500, to be transferred from short-term interest expense, in the amount of $10,000, in general reserve fund, in the amount of $2,500, and transferred to the Assessor's Professional Service, in the amount of $12,500. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funding for an appraisal of real, and expert, real property, and expert testimony for an appellate tax board hearing.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an interdepartmental transfer of $12,500 to provide funding for an appraisal of real property, expert testimony for an appellate tax board hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. With that said, could I have a motion close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Next is, again, Council Hagan, finance report.
In finance, the first item, I'd like to announce our next meeting. The next meeting of finance, they're actually gonna be moved to different days, because we're trying, we set up a joint meeting, at least the first one is gonna be a joint meeting with the school committee, where we're gonna take up the override questions for the ballot. And this meeting will be held in this room at 6:00 PM on June 4th. Again, this will be a joint meeting with the school committee, and hopefully, we will have, at that time, we'll release a second one, it may be on June 18th. That's our tentative date for a second meeting on the school issue. I also would like to request a public hearing for the June, the only June meeting, on June 6th, for discussion and approval or rejection of the FY 2013 city budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to set a public hearing for June 6th, 6:15 in these chambers, to, I guess, set the fiscal year 13 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? None, motion passes. Council Hagan, you still have before?
That's it until new business, and I'll have one more right of the new business.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, Council McCoy?
Another report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Appointments, Council Winnie?
Thank you. We have one appointment that we met tonight at quarter of 6:00. The appointment is for Jason E. Duda to the Licensing Board. We discussed the appointment, and it was voted on 3 to 0 to come forth with the recommendation that the city council approve the appointment. So at this point, I'll make the motion that we appoint Jason Duda to the Licensing Board with the term of expiration of June 4th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of mayor appointment of Jason Duda to the Licensing Board, with an expiration date of 6/4/18. Any further comments on the motion? Council McCoy?
I just was really pleased to be able to, you know, reappoint Mr. Duda. I think he's done a great job coming, he's been a great city servant, everything from the planning board, and now on the Licensing Board, and from what I hear, he's doing an outstanding job there, so we'd certainly vote in support of his appointment.
Okay, any other comments, further comments on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Council Winnie, you still have before?
Yes, we are going to be holding our next appointment subcommittee meeting on June 6th at 5:45 in these chambers, for the new appointment that is coming up under new business.
Thank you.
That is all, thank you.
Ordinance, Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it was a good segue that we had appointments before, looking at the Licensing Committee. One of the things that we had before our committee was a request for an over quota liquor license from Casey Douglas, looking to get a one-over quota liquor license for 60 to 62 Main Street. And so our committee met and recommended 3 to 0 that we approve the said over quota liquor license, and I've been advised that I, when I make my motion, I actually should read the whole resolution that we're going to send to the legislature. So unless anybody has any questions now, I'd like to, I'll make my motion.
Mr. President? Council Riz? I'm not sure if members of the public are here to speak to this, but I'd like to ask the council to allow the public speak to be reopened, in case anybody wants to talk about this. It doesn't require a public hearing, but I think it's appropriate if anybody wants to speak to the licensing. These are sometimes controversial issues, not that this one is.
And also, you know, point of order, if we do, if the city is granted this.
Oh, we're up ahead.
Fine. If the city is granted this, it does have to go through the License Commission, and they will have a hearing as well.
As well? Oh, really? So it has to go back to?
It goes back to the local licensing.
Oh, so there's another chance? Well, okay, anyway.
So, that being said, I would like to move that.
I do have a brief question. You met on this how many times in ordinance?
How many times did we meet on this specific thing? Once, as far as looking, reviewing this particular case.
Was the applicant at the meeting?
He was at the meeting.
Okay. Mr. President, I did ask if we could allow the public, are we, are you okay with that? If anybody wants to speak to it?
I will, for the sake of democracy, I will entertain opening a public hearing just for this particular item if someone proposes the motion and seconded it.
I move that we allow public speak for this particular item.
Okay, we have allowed a public hearing just for this particular item? Is there anyone in the public who would like to step forward and?
We need to vote on the motion. Please. Mr. President, we need to vote on the motion.
Yep. All those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed? Abstained, none? Mr. Mayor, please.
Councilors, you have heard me on this subject before, and so some of this, some of this will sound very familiar. I am not a fan of quota licenses, and so I believe that any restaurant that wants a license should be able to apply to the License Board and receive one. I wholeheartedly support this effort, and I will sign any legislation that you propose to provide this liquor license, and, to be quite honest, any other liquor license for any restaurant establishment here in East Hampton.
Okay, anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak to this issue? Hearing none? Now we, okay? Okay? I'll take a motion, close the public hearing, and we can get to your statement, Council Hagan?
I just have one question for Council Derby before he reads the motion.
We don't have to close the public hearing.
We don't have to close it, we can do it here, right?
Just so that he can read it. Just, I am reading, I have no problem with it. Was there any opposition at your hearings?
No.
No? That was my only question, I didn't know if anyone, because we held the public hearing, if anyone spoke at your, against it at your hearing.
Nobody spoke against it at our subcommittee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So before we go to the motion, any further discussion on this?
Okay.
Okay, with that said, Council Derby?
Thank you very much. I would like to move that the city of East Hampton grant an additional liquor license for the sale of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises, be enacted by the Senate and the House of Representatives and General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows. Notwithstanding the provisions of Section 17 of Chapter 138 of the general laws, the licensing authority of the city of East Hampton may grant an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises to John Casey Douglas at 60 to 62 Main Street in the city of East Hampton, under Section 12 of said Chapter 138. Said license shall be subject to all provisions of said Chapter 138, except said Section 17. John Casey Douglas shall have a period of three years from the effective date of this act within which to apply for the license. If he has not applied for the license within the three-year period, the license shall remain with the licensing authority and may be reissued to the same location under the conditions set forth in this act. The local alcohol licensing authority shall not approve the transfer of said license to any other location, but it may grant the license to a new applicant at the same location if the applicant files with the licensing authority a letter from the Department of Revenue indicating that the license is good standing with the department, licensee is in good standing with the department, and that any and all applicable taxes have been paid. If the license granted under this section is canceled, revoked, or no longer in use, it shall be returned physically with all the legal rights, privileges, and restrictions pertaining thereto to the licensing authority, which may grant the license to a new applicant at the same location under the same conditions as specified in this act.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of an over quota license for 62, 60, 62 Main Street, as presented by Councilor Derby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, you're right? You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can ask to have the motion, you good? Okay, opposed? Abstained? I apologize. Okay, with that said, motion proves. Council Derby, you still have before?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, we have, trying to clear up my agenda here, wanted to, we're still working diligently on the wording for the bicycle ordinance, making good progress, having spirited discussions, but looking at my date here, it shows me that I am one day negligent. So I would like to ask for an extension, I move that I have a 60-day extension on that particular item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to extend the ordinance, to amend city ordinance, Chapter 3, bicycles, for 60 days. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Abstention? Motion passes. Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to set two city, two public hearings for our next meeting, and I'll do those separately, in the form of a motion. I would like to set a public hearing for the ordinance amendment to add two principal clerk positions to the pay plan at 6:15 in these chambers on June 6th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us to set a public hearing to add, concerning the general ordinance amendment, to add two principal clerk positions, June 6th, 6:15 in these chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? None. Abstentions? None. Motion passes. Council Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. And the next one, I move to set a public hearing for a general ordinance amendment to add a public health nurse to the pay plan at 6:15 in these chambers on June 6th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend a public hearing for the general ordinance amendment to add a public health nurse to the pay plan at our next meeting, 6:15 in these chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Opposition? Abstentions? None. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And finally, I just want to announce that our next meeting will be May 30th at 6:00 PM in one of the downstairs conference rooms.
Thank you.
Barbara will tell me which one later.
Does that conclude?
That concludes, thank you.
Okay. Council Agleavins? Property, please.
There is no report tonight.
Thank you. That said, since there's no old business pending, we'll go to new business. Counsel Riz, could you move the first one?
I would like to move that the request from the Personnel Director to accept Chapter 32B insurance be moved to Rules Committee for review.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to move the request for person, from the Personnel Director concerning Chapter 32B, Section 3, insurance to rules for consideration and review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None? Motion passes. Mayor Appointments, Counsel Winnie?
Yes, I move that the mayor will appoint Alexis Brechnechner for Housing Partnership Committee be moved down to appointment subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend that the mayor appointment be moved to subcommittee for consideration and review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None? Motion passes. Counsel Hagan, you've got the last item for the night.
I'd like to move the supplemental appropriation, the amount of $300,000 from the CPA Fund to assist Riverside Industries window, with window replacement to finance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend the supplemental appropriation of $300,000 from the CPA Fund to assist Riverside Industries be sent to finance for review and consideration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I do have to say for full disclosure that I do have a notice with the city clerk, because my, I have a family member who actually receives a small stipend there, and, but occurrence of conflict of interest forms with the city clerk, for those who are interested, I do have a copy present. I do have a couple of quick things to do before we go into a motion to adjourn, but go ahead.
I just want to do a first reading on this item so that we can...
Okay.
This is dated May 7th for supplemental appropriation request. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested, $300,000, to be appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Fund in the amount of $150,000 into the CPA Fund in the amount of $150,000 to be appropriated to the Riverside Window Project in the amount of $300,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to assist Riverside Industries'